Call a regular meeting of council order for Monday, October 6th. Before we do approve the agenda, I have a great honor to present an award tonight, or medal, Fire Service Exemplary Service Medal from the Governor General of Canada, 20 years of service for Deputy Fire Chief Mike Thibodeau. In recognition of 20 years of service, Deputy Fire Chief Mike Thibodeau is commended for his unwavering commitment to excellence in the fire service. Deputy Thibodeau joined the department on November 17th, 2024, and he has exemplified professionalism, leadership, and steadfast devotion to the safety and well-being of the community of Tumbler Ridge. In 2017, Deputy Thibodeau was promoted to lieutenant, then in 2018, he was promoted to captain, and in 2021, he was promoted to deputy fire chief and currently holds this position. With 2,988 hours of training and nearly 2,000 emergency calls answered, totaling 1,487 emergency service hours, this medal honors a career marked by commitment, integrity, and exemplary conduct. With that, I would like to call up Deputy Fire Chief Mike Thibodeau to receive his 20-year fire service exemplary service medal from the Governor General of Canada. We'll get fire chief. Okay, also, just before we do approve the agenda, we had a longtime resident pass away, and I think we should honor that with a minute of silence for Erin Wenvig. I think with all the volunteer hours she's done for our community, I mean, she's a heart of this community. I think it's too bad that she's obviously moved on, and you know, obviously, her pain is, she's pain-free now, but I think it's really, really important when we recognize those people, so if I can get councils willing to do one minute of silence, please. All right, thank you very much. Before we do the approval of the agenda, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we add a couple late reports to the agenda for tonight. Sorry, I marked him with something else because I don't find them with staff markers. It'd be, first one will be 8.4, a letter in support of a petition for restoring the 24-hour emergency department. If I can get a second, there, Councilor Hoffman, any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried. The second one will be 8.5, a letter to RTVS and RCCBC. If I can get a second, there, Councilor Hoffman, discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carried. Just so everybody's aware, Councilor DeSoe is joining us via Zoom. I'll take approval of the amended agenda, please. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. That the October 6th regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended.
Second, there, Councilor Knoxanna, all in favor? Carried. Adoption of the minutes for September 15th, 2025, regular meeting of council minutes. Councilor Julik?
That September 15th, 2025, regular meeting of council minutes be approved as presented.
Second, there, Councilor Knoxanna, any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Call the question, all in favor? September 27th, 2025, special meeting of council minutes. Councilor Knoxanna?
That the September 27th, 2025, special meeting of council minutes be approved as presented.
Second, there, Councilor Norbury, any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Any business arising from the minutes, council?
No.
Thank you. Delegations, Tumbler Ridge Outdoor Recreation Association Youth Division, Austin Lindsay, Dante Lombard Jr., oh my, Galapi, thank you, in attendance to present counsel on introductions of the Tora Youth Division, what they accomplished and what their future plans are for the school year. Please come on up to the delegation table. All right, the floor is yours. It just asked whoever's speaking if you just shared the mic back and forth if you're taking turns, just so that we can make sure we hear you. It's all yours.
Hi, I'm Dante, and I joined the Tora Youth Division when it was created, and I'm very proud to be a part of helping our community build opportunities where youth can be a part and a voice in outdoor recreation.
I'm Austin. I've been with the Youth Division since the creation, and I'm proud to be working along with everyone to build our opportunities and relationship with youth and the outdoors.
Hello, I'm Junior. I'm a part of the Tora Youth Division. I'm very grateful to be part of this organization, to learn more about the great outdoors and what it has to offer. Slide two, please. The Tora Youth Division was launched in 2025. There are 18 local youth ranging from grades 10 to 12 that have came together, and we started talking about how we could build the base of the Tora Youth Division. We found a reason, or why, why we want a Tora Youth, and what we want to do with this organization. The Tora Youth Division is a very passionate, community-driven initiative based in Tumbler Ridge that is dedicated to inspiring the next generation through meaningful outdoor engagement. As a branch of Tora, our mission is to connect youth with the natural world by collaborating with outdoor organizations, courage, hands-on learning, environmental stewardship, and a strong sense of community.
The Tora Youth Division was formed because we wanted to bring youth more into outdoor recreation, and how can you bring youth into outdoor recreation without a youth voice? The youth of Tumbler Ridge also uses our community's outdoor recreation, and we think that it's important that our voice is included when making decisions about the outdoor recreation here in Tumbler Ridge. Tumbler Ridge is more than just a dot on the map. It is a sanctuary of untouched beauty and raw Canadian wilderness. Here, nature reigns with dignity and power, but more than anything, Tumbler Ridge teaches us the value of connection, connection to nature, to history, and to each other. Everyone loves Tumbler Ridge, especially the youth. We have youth who are interested in areas such as finance, finance and admin, Indigenous relations, trails, events, and social media. We want all of you guys to teach us the importance of trails and to guide us through building, maintaining, and protecting the trails so that one day, you guys don't have to worry about the trails and the nature of Tumbler Ridge being dismissed or forgotten. We would like to encourage the youth's participation in these areas of Tora, and this year, we'd like to focus on building the foundation and the framework of the Tora Youth Division.
So far, since the start, Tora's Youth Division has contributed more than 100 hours of volunteer work, with events like the Emperor's Challenge, the Freestyle Motocross Show, and Tora's very own golf tournament. The Youth Division was more than happy to be there and put in the work to make it memorable. Better yet, our youth have taken part in safety courses such as first aid and chainsaw safety to ensure that we can all stay safe and aware during trail cleanups and other activities.
Tora Youth Division has previously met with consultants of the Trail's Master Plan Destination Management Strategy. We shared our perspective on trail access all around town, and we even brought new ideas about different things that we can bring into Tumbler Ridge. We also talked about trail access and how it could be improved for easier and safer usage.
Going forward, our plans for the next year are to continue as this committee and begin to plan and form a board for the upcoming youth of next year. We plan on delivering high school and elementary school presentations to increase interest among youth in our town. We're going to prepare for the grade, we're going to prepare the grade nines for next year that are eligible for Tora youth, as well as lead school activities such as career fair boots, snowmobile demos, and leave no trace education. As a branch of Tora, we want to elaborate on the youth about stewardship and keeping our outdoors clean and respected. We would like to present more hands-on outdoor activities because kids absorb this interest and knowledge better by doing instead of listening to us speak about it in a classroom. Other plans we have are identifying more training opportunities, participating in club work bees, and fundraising for our own merchandise and swag.
By learning about trails, engaging in environmental stewardship, and contributing to local initiatives, we aim to inspire others, get outside more, and recognize how capable and unique today's youth truly are. We're all very proud of what we've created and what we've done so far and what we have planned for the future, and we thank Tora and specifically the Tora Board for giving us the opportunity to create this and being a branch of Tora. And then we also thank Sherilyn Hua for all the opportunities and support she's given throughout this process. We really couldn't have done it without her. And we thank you all for coming here today and giving us the time to share about who we are and what our plans are and what we've done so far.
Perfect. Thank you very much. You guys did an awesome job. Did an awesome job. Thank you for coming in. You guys did really well there. Great presentation, so thank you for your time. Questions from council, Councilor Julik?
Mostly, I wanted to say, wow, you guys are all really great public speakers. I applaud you. That was really great, really great presentation, and I just want to thank you guys for the work that you put in. A hundred hours is a lot of hours, and I think you nailed it about making sure that the outdoors are here for everybody to enjoy, so thank you very much for your continued work, and your plans look amazing, so thanks again.
Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to echo what everyone else I'm sure is thinking. You guys did a great job on your presentation, did very good at speaking, and I really appreciate hearing from your perspective. One of the things that we try to do as elected officials is we try to think of the perspective of the community. One of the things that we're always trying to do is trying to understand what the youth of today are looking for, so I want to commend you for stepping up and giving us that voice so we can understand your perspective of things, because most of us can think back 20, 30, 40, 50 years in the past to when we were in high school or just out of it, and you know, it's a different world today than it was then, so thank you for bringing that. I really appreciate that you have a succession plan in place, trying to bring in more volunteers into your organization and to grow that volunteerism spirit that most of us have and enjoy, teaching that to others, so well done. Well done to you, well done to the Tora Board. Keep it up.
Thank you. Councilor Bertrand?
Thank you, Mayor. Well done, very well done. One thing I really liked about this group is I like the fact that a board is going to be created, because then you can learn a little bit about governance and how, you know, difference, different opinions can come together in a board as one, and decisions can be made as well. But I really like how the youth have contributed to this group as well. You're right, you use the trails every day, you recreate outside every day, and it's nice that this group has been created to take some ownership for our back country as well. I think in the past, a lot of our youth have been discriminated against as far as use and abuse type of attitude, and this is really showing that you take pride in your backyard and you want to take care of it, so well done, thank you.
Any else from council? I have a couple questions for you, because I'm getting off too easy, can't do that. How many attended the courses for first aid and chainsaw from the youth?
Most of us did first aid, and then I think about half of us did chainsaw, and we have about 18 students, yeah.
That's great, good to hear. You mentioned about meeting with the consultants from Trail Master Plan and Destination Management Strategy, and you said about how you threw out some new ideas. Can you, are you willing to share some of those ideas? Sorry, I wasn't going to let you get off easy. Only if you want to share them, you don't have to. I was just wondering if you're willing to share a couple of the ideas maybe you guys came up with?
Well, we kind of came up with an idea that, kind of like, trying to find ways to like, add more trails and like, navigate more trails for easier usage, especially around town, so yeah.
Good, appreciate that. The reason I ask that is obviously, it's nice to know what you're thinking. We always try to engage the youth. We started that, you know, I think we should have started earlier in this, in this term, and we didn't. We started doing that last, probably May, maybe a little April-ish, so we lost a bit, so I appreciate you guys' time you're spending. One thing I really liked that you have in your presentation is leave no trace. I think that's really, really important to hear from our youth about leaving no trace, and it's not that I say, oh, the youth go out there and leave a mess, but to me, when you are the leader about leaving no trace, us as adults don't have any choice but to follow that, right? We can, we can say that, hey, we're going to go out and we're going to leave no traces as adults, but if our youth do that, and they're working with their peers and the children to leave no trace out there, we have no choice but to follow that, whether that's people that come in to visit our community or not, they see our youth and our children doing it already, it's automatic in my opinion. So to hear you guys say that, you made it in your presentation, but you also stated it, I think it's really, really important what you stated there, and I commend you on that. I think that's so, so important to have that no trace out there, and I think it leads probably in a better way for you guys too, to get those trails, to access more trails, to build more trails, when you're showing that there's no trace and stuff like that with working with the Indigenous, our Indigenous neighbors and government. Indigenous, our Indigenous neighbors and government. I think it's really, really important. So, again, I want to thank you guys for coming in. I think you guys did an amazing job with it. I appreciate that you thank the people that helped you, because that's what they're there for. They're there to guide you guys. So if there's anything this council can do, please feel free to reach back out to us. If we can help in any way, any way you think, let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Tumblr Ridge Outdoor Recreation Association. Sherilyn Hewitt, interim executive director. Is there a board member going to join you?
Yes, sir.
In attendance to present to council an update on TRORA's projects and initiatives, along with an explanation of their fee-for-service requests submitted on August 8, 2025. Flor- Oh, and Curtis Msudinski. It does say board member, that's why I looked that way. But, welcome. That's all right. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So as I started pulling pictures for this presentation, I realized it was going to quickly turn into our annual report, which is going to come to you in just under two months. So this is a very brief overview of what we've done so far, because just wanted to share what's been happening. It's been a big year for TRORA. We've learned a lot. There's been a few bumps along the way, but a lot of progress. The goal from the start has been to bring everyone together to build stability, a shared voice for outdoor recreation, and that's exactly what's been happening. Winterfest was the first event for TRORA, and it couldn't have gone better. Well, we could have probably had a little more snow for that event for us. Over 150 people came out, families, visitors, and volunteers. People got to meet the clubs, try new activities, and learn about what each one does and their stewardship for the outdoors as well. It was also an honor to have Jolene Couture presented at that event with the King's Coronation Medal. We raised just over $4,800 during that one, which will go back to strengthen TRORA's financial stability and support future funding opportunities. Our second annual golf tournament also carried that momentum forward. It was a sold-out tournament, a lot of fun that day, and just under $19,000 was raised. And the boards decided that funding this year will stay with TRORA to help leverage other grants for us. We are also proud to support the 25th anniversary of the Emperor's Challenge with the Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society. Nobody truly realizes how much work goes into making that event such a safe and memorable, successful day for everyone. So we'd just like to really give an extra shout out to the Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society for all they've done and their volunteers to make that event so successful. We also offered safety training through funding from the District of Tumblr Ridge and the Outdoor Recreation Council of B.C. So between chainsaw safety and first aid, all 38 spots were filled by club members, youth, and as well as community volunteers. It was a great mix of people, gaining the practical skills that keep our recreation areas safe, and our volunteers confident when in the field. We also set up at community events throughout the year to share information and build awareness about TRORA. And we were featured in the Outdoor Recreation Council's Guidebook for Outdoor Recreation for Community and Economic Development. This year was really about people and building the foundation that keeps this work moving forward. We launched the TRORA Youth Division, and as you've just seen, we couldn't be more proud of them. They've shown up with enthusiasm, reliability, and a real sense of pride in their community. And they were modest when they reported their hours at just over 100. As of September the 9th, it was 410. So I haven't done a tally on the hours for their meetings for the last two weeks. They're learning, helping, and already taking ownership, building their own identity and how they're going to support TRORA's initiatives. And they are the ones who will carry this work forward as our future board members and leaders. We also completed board of governance training through the Tumblr Ridge UNESCO Global Geopark with members from our boards as well as the founding members' boards as well. It was a lot to take in during that training session. And one day, it would be great to see if some of these providers offer refreshers for us. But in the long run, it's going to make us all stronger, have our clear roles clear, defined, tighter communication, and better planning across our organizations. And also the summer through the Canada Summer Jobs Program, we were able to hire Denise Rial as our first summer student. She had 280 hours with us, which she was instrumental in everything that we did this summer, helping with the event coordination, other outreach, social media. And the board is now reviewing to look at how many positions we'll consider applying for in December. And now we have a dedicated office space for TRORA as well. We are located at the Northern Lights College, which makes it a lot easier for our meetings when others are coming into town, and to be able to store things. I think for a lot of the nonprofits especially, having to keep things at home are difficult. So. Next one. Partnerships have continued to grow and strengthen this year. We've kept strong connections with ATV B.C. and the B.C. Snowmobile Federation, and that support really matters. Having them advocate at the provincial level means our local clubs have a voice beyond Tumblr Ridge, and we're grateful for that. They've also worked with us on TRORA's membership model, helping make sure it fits both locally and provincially. And that kind of teamwork goes a long way. TRORA also received provincial recognition this year through the BCSF Excellence Award, which is a great acknowledgement of what we're doing. We've also started to work more closely this year with First Nations, rec sites and trails, and B.C. parks. And I think it's important for us all to really note how much demand is on their time. There's, these relationships take time, but working together, we can align our efforts and move initiatives forward effectively. We're now well into the Trail's Master Plan and Destination Management Strategy, which is led by the district with Selkirk. And the process has been strong and productive. And the strategy is going to be a major step forward for all of us, guiding how recreation and tourism grow together. One of the biggest steps forward for us was launching our new website and membership system in September, giving TRORA its own clear identity and a home base for everything we do. For the first time, one individual membership now includes all four founding club, the Bridge Riders, the Grizzly Valley ATV, the Tumblr Ridge Mountain Bike Association, the Wolverine Nordic Mountain Society, and a bronze-level membership to the Tumblr Ridge UNESCO Global Geopark. We also introduced our corporate membership program focused on building long-term stability and stronger partnerships with local and regional businesses. This was a huge amount of work for our board, developing something that hasn't been done before, and setting TRORA up with a system that can grow and adapt over time. It's real progress, something that connects the whole outdoor community under one shared vision, and it will only get stronger from here. And all of that progress from building the system to strengthening partnerships is what allowing TRORA to move into a more stable, sustainable phase. So this brings us to our request this evening. TRORA is asking council to consider a fee-for-service agreement to help cover operational costs, not its salaries. This funding supports the coordination and communication that ties everything together, from youth engagement and stewardship initiatives to community outreach and partnership development. It complements, not replaces, other funding sources such as grants and corporate sponsorships. We've also committed to full accountability. If TRORA secures more corporate funding than expected and needed, any unneeded portion of the district's money would be returned. This steady predictable support helps TRORA stay focused on advocacy, stewardship, and community connection, and ensures the progress we've made continues to move forward. Outdoor recreation is what brings Tumblr Ridge to life. It's how people connect, explore, and find community here. TRORA is helping make sure that continues by supporting the clubs, engaging youth, and keeping the focus on stewardship and sustainability. This year has proven that when people work together, good things happen. The foundation is built. Now we need to keep building on it, strengthening every part of what we've started. Thank you to this council for standing behind this work and believing in what it means for our community.
Perfect. Thank you very much for coming as a delegation. Appreciate the update. Questions from council? Counselor Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I got to say, guys, this is ridiculous what you guys have done in the short time that you've been together. Like, I was hoping you guys would progress like this in maybe two years, not one. So I just wanted to give you your kudos, and glad to see it. The youth component also is really good to see tonight. And keep it up. I'm really impressed.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Calca. Not to shift the focus back to the youth council, but, you know, you were able to do in one year that we've been struggling to do for many years. Let's get the youth voice out. Maybe we have to target a little more on outdoor recreation, but you did a great job. I'll echo Counselor Hoffman's comments in that you've, the amount that you've done this last year has been exemplary, and you should be committed for it. I look forward to years to come.
Thank you. Counselor Gillick?
I'm just so excited to see how far you guys have come and all the things that you've done. I remember my first meeting with Jesse and Trace when TRORA first came to be, and the idea behind it, and to see it all come to life is pretty cool. Just, and seeing you guys out in the community. I saw that your webpage went live while we were down in Victoria and took a check, or took a look at that. And that was, that was really cool. And to be able to buy all the memberships there, I really hope that we see, that you guys see an increase in memberships. I know when I'm out and about, often I get questions, and so I'll be happy to do that. And we also got to see Jesse present about TRORA while we were down in Victoria. So I know that this doesn't happen easily, and four, five organizations coming together and you guys all making it work is pretty cool. So thank you guys all so much for all that you do. And thanks for presenting tonight. It's really cool to see all the stuff.
Counselor Bertrand?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your update, presentation. Very well done. Just a couple of questions. I'm curious on the board training. I was just wondering what kind of participation you had on that?
I'd have to go back to give you the exact numbers, but I do believe we had close to 18 in total that came through.
So, well more than three-quarters of board members, I would say?
Yes.
Perfect. And the question about the memberships being sold through the TRORA website, so is that just going to be, like, it's a membership for all four clubs? So is it just going to be split up between the four clubs, or does that stay with TRORA?
So for that membership, that funding goes directly back to the clubs?
To the clubs.
TRORA is not taking any off of that, no.
So it would split four ways, whatever?
So we have a model based on their membership fees, correct?
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, got a few things for you. What is your request for grant need fee service? Much? It's on your thing. And of course, we don't get to see it, so I'm going to ask the number.
Okay, so for the first year, we asked for, sorry there, let me just pull this up, $12,180. For '27, it was $13,200. And then $13,700 for the third year.
Good. Thank you for that.
And if I can just-
Yep, give her.
-that one there, your worship. It was difficult to put these numbers together in August. Normally, the fee for service and grant need is requested in January for the nonprofits. So for us, we're still in the middle of fundraising at that time of the year. Nothing's done. TRORA will not see their budget or our draft budget for '26 until next month. So if our numbers, we find out they're less, we'll most definitely be sending an update back to you.
Yeah, appreciate that. And appreciate your comments about the dating for our fee-for-service or grant need. Something coming from that later in this meeting. You mentioned within your thing, and maybe you didn't mention, but definitely read through your reports here, current funding is secured until early 2026. I'm assuming that's wages. What's the plan moving forward? Are you willing to share that?
So with that, there aren't grants that are available aside from what we had for the SPMT to start this position. So that is where our corporate membership model, which is being pushed, we're hoping that is what's going to cover our shortfall in there.
Good. Appreciate that. If I may, I know it just launched in September. I think if you're seeing a downfall there, if you can come back to us early, that you see a concern from the board, to me, when it comes to salaries, be concerned from all the time that's been committed, obviously by the board and their employee. But the initiative when it came from the district, I think what TRORA's been doing is, we're leading. We're a leader here in Tumblr Ridge, and it's being talked about all over British Columbia, for sure. It's definitely in Alberta now being talked about as well. And I don't think, you know, from my side, I mean, I'll let you guys obviously try to fundraise as much as you can. But to be honest, if you can come to the forefront or somebody from the board early, that maybe we're having problems, we might see an issue. Because to me, I mean, obviously, it's up to council, but to me, what I've seen from TRORA, I don't think we can allow TRORA to go away. I think it's very hard, I would think, from the board's side, to take on more volunteer hours to try and run the organization without an employee. So I just want to keep a pulse on that. I think it's really, really important, especially for what you've done in the last year and what was done previously, that we need to make sure we keep a pulse on. Again, we're leading here. I know you have some great First Nation engagements. I've heard about it from definitely from West Mowley and Soto. Nothing but talk highly about what you guys have got going on, what your thoughts are, and what your direction is. So I don't think we can afford to lose that in Tumblr Ridge when we talk about our trails, especially our advertising when it comes to ATV and hiking and sledding and mountain biking now and all that. So if you can just keep us on the point for that. One other question, did you say 410 volunteer hours?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know that group's still here. I think that should be talked about too, when we talk about, in the presentation, and I appreciate, I mean, I'm not sure when that presentation was built, when we talk about 100 hours, great, don't take me wrong, youth volunteering 100 hours of their time from going, instead of going out fishing or dirt biking or that. But when we're talking 410 hours, you can't put a dollar of amount to that, especially when you get your youth involved within your organization. To see youth give up 410 hours as a total from the youth's side, I think that is unreal. Good on you as youth and all the people that partake in that. And I think strong leaders that presented here, and not to take away from TRORA, but let's go back to the youth, for the presenters that were here, I think you're leading that too. And I think you'll see more youth come onboard, but you might also see some of your peers in the elementary school looking at what they can do. You know, maybe they can't do some of the same things that you're volunteering for, but just partaking, whether that's cleanups or whatever. So hats off to you guys. That's 410 hours. That's 310 hours more than you reported. So good on you. Wow. Again, I think TRORA is so important when we, and I know the youth thing was something new this year for you guys. 410 hours, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good start. Good on you guys. But yeah, so if you can just keep, the board can keep us a pulse on that, or keep it with staff, I think it's really important. One thing I want to mention is golf term. I did partake in it. Great job. Great job. I've definitely seen the youth out there enjoying themselves, which is great. The weather was nice, but you did a really great job organizing it with your volunteers and the people that were helping you, support from your board. I think it was really, really well done. It's talked about, obviously, in the Peace region, not in Tumblr Ridge. So there was a lot of out-of-towners here. They talk about it, on how well it was done, and the prizes, and, you know, an opportunity to win a side-by-side for a hole-in-one, which one year we're going to see it, I would hope. But again, I want to thank you guys. Please, 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 don't stress, but come early if there's an issue there. And definitely the staff, so we can get it out in front of council early if something happens. So, thank you for your time. All right, my agenda's all over the place today. Consent agenda. Counselor Nuxana?
That all items in the October 6, 2025 consent agenda be moved for information?
Secondary, Counselor Norbury. Discussion? All in favor? Carried. Are there any items that council would like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. 6.6. Steep Rock Strata letter for discussion, please?
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Calca. Thanks to the Steep Rock Strata for their patience, and all we got this in front of us. You know, I don't want to repeat some of the things that they said, but some things really did stick with me in their, in their comments. As, you know, I've been advocating for, for this a while myself. You know, what it comes back to me is that we have people that are paying the exact same taxes as everybody else in this community for services that the district delivers, but they do not receive the same services that the district provides to other taxpayers. but they do not receive the same services that the district provides to other taxpayers. I can appreciate that their area is a strata, but the idea that this is an open-air strata with roads versus just a parking lot, I think sticks with me quite strongly. So, for myself, I'd like to see a report on the costs associated with providing them snow clearing. And I'd like to move this forward for them as this is something that we all need. You know, we talk about receiving the same access to services as the greater Vancouver area. I think I apply that to this in our community. How does it feel as a resident of this community, 200 homes that doesn't have snow removal in the middle of summer, the middle of winter, when they need it?
Thank you. Counselor Nuxana.
Thank you. I'd like to echo that, that Steep Rock residents do pay the same mill rate as the rest of town. The residents have come forward requesting snow clearing on the roads only. This is something we could easily accommodate, asking them to follow the same bylaws as snow clearing in the rest of the community, that there can't be vehicles parked on roads, just the basic things that we do require in the rest of town. They're not asking for driveways. They're not asking for parking lots. This is basic snow clearing on through roads. This technically is private property because it is a strata, but we do a lot of work as a municipality on private property already. If there's a sewer backup or a water freeze-up, district employees do that work and that is charged back to homeowners at a set rate. So, I see this as something that we can work out the rates of this or staff can and negotiate that with the strata to provide this essential service. There is a number of residents in Steep Rock that have mobility issues and this is just a very basic ask that the residents are asking for so that they can navigate through our winters.
Thank you. Counselor Gillick.
Yeah, I think for me, I understand where the residents are coming from for sure. And before I knew much about stratas, I thought it was going to be an easy-peasy lemon-squeezey thing. Since I've learned about stratas and the legal ins and outs of that, it sounds like it's not quite as easy of a process going forward for the district. Whether, and not an easy process making sure that we're doing the right thing so that everybody's in the free and clear when it comes time for decisions being made, if it has to be made at a legal level. The charge back, absolutely. Where do we charge that back? And how do we make sure that that's reasonable for each of the residents in the strata? For me, I'm not comfortable right now making a decision. I wouldn't until I learned a little bit more about stratas, making sure that we sat down. If we were to move forward with something like this, finding out if, what kind of cost that would look like. So, I think that we got to move forward, but with all the information that we can get so that everybody's taken care of, so to speak, in it all. Staffing, if we have the staffing level to make sure it can continue to happen legally, are we allowed to be in that space? Because it isn't actually District of Tumbler Ridge space. It is a strata and privately-owned property. A plow couldn't come into my yard and plow my yard without my permission. Like, and I get that this is all things that would happen. I would want to make sure we ticked all the boxes before moving forward.
Thank you. I'm going to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Steep Rock. I'll take the blame that this did not get put forward at a sooner time on our agenda. So, when I was reached out by an individual from the strata, I said, "Please send me an email so I can get it into the correspondent." So, you know, again, this was a delegation that to me, I think, you know, I'll take the blame. I'm obviously the mayor. I'll take the blame. But I think when we see delegations, we've got to remember sometimes there's an ask there that we get it forward in the next agenda. It has to come as a motion. It doesn't have to come from me, but I'll take the blame. I can also add it to the agenda, but I just want to know. I know there's some people from the strata here. I definitely apologize to you that it took us long. In the same aspect, I do believe we need a report from staff. We need, to me, we need to know what it looks like, what's the pros, what's the cons, what's the cost, all that. And, you know, I know, you know, if we would have moved this forward sooner, we'd have a bit more time. Now, we're, you know, we're October. Usually, it snows at some point in October. But I do believe we need to report to get that information back to council as soon as staff could, just so that we can have the information to either make a decision on what it looks like for that strata. So, but yeah, my apologies to that strata. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. I'll be honest, when I was thinking about motions, I just want to do it and say it's free, but I agree with you. I agree with you. We do need to get the information to everybody. Counselor Nuxana has some information about the cost, but I think anytime we make a decision moving forward that impacts the future, we should get information. So, I have a motion that staff prepare a report on the costs associated with providing Steep Rock mobile home community with snow removal. There we go.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana. Discussion? Counselor Nuxana.
Thank you. As Counselor Norbury mentioned, in my agenda review with Ms. Scott, I did ask her to just pull some information that they already had. So, I'm hopeful that this is a pretty easy report for them to pull out. Because I would like to see this move forward as soon as we can, if possible, because as you said, we'll probably get snow any day now.
Yeah. I don't want to put a timeline to it. I know staff has already, if you got the information, staff has already looked into some of the stuff. So, I think we leave it in staff's hands and they'll get it to us when they can. Again, I don't see it. You know, I know they have some information, so it'll come when it comes. Any other discussion? Okay, can I call, oops, Counselor Hoffman. Sorry, Mayor. Don't be sorry.
I don't think it needs to be part of the motion, but there are other considerations than just costs. So, I'm sure staff will include that in the report and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, there's going to be do's, don'ts. You know, they got to look into all that. That'll be a full report. I mean, I know we're talking costs, but staff has captured this. I know staff has looked into some stuff and stuff. I know previously, we used to do it and then we stopped doing it. So, there is some legals there that staff will have to do. Okay, any other discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Are there any other items council would like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Norbury.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Can we still talk to 6.6?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My only thought, it comes to what do we do in the interim? I can appreciate we have a report coming back to us. I want to recall that we did allow for Steep Rock to reach out to the municipality to offer snow clearing services. Is that available to them at this time?
I think that's not. What council's direction was removed, so it would have to be. Again, we're waiting for a report. And I understand where you're coming from and I understand it for the residents of Steep Rock, but to me, we need to have that report. But it was done, but it was removed by council. It's a motion. Anything else to discuss in regards to the strata, Steep Rock strata? Okay, are there any other items council would like to bring forward for discussion? Okay, moving on to bylaws. 7.1 zoning amendment, bylaw number 755, 2025, adoption. Report dated October 6, 2025, from the Director of Corporate Services regarding zoning amendment, bylaw number 755, 2025, for adoption. Recommendation, please, Counselor Nuxana.
The council adopts the District of Tumbler Ridge zoning amendment, bylaw number 755, 2025.
Secondary, Counselor Norbury. Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Sorry? Okay, Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025. Readings reported dated October 6, 2025, from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025. Readings. Take them one at a time. Counsel-
Thank you, Mayor. Calca, I need to recuse myself as I work for the GeoPark and have a monetary interest. Thanks.
Or we remove the GeoPark and do it separately, which is allowed. One at a time. Counselor Nuxana.
The council gives first reading to 2025 Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025.
Secondary, Counselor Hoffman. Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Recommendation number two. Counselor Nuxana.
The council gives second reading to the 2025 Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025.
Secondary, Counselor Hoffman. Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Recommendation number three. Counselor Nuxana.
The council gives third reading to 2025 Permissive Tax Exemption Amendment, bylaw number 756, 2025.
Secondary, Counselor Hoffman. Discussion? Again, I'll just mention it. Now's the time. If anybody wants changes, now's the time. Or if you don't agree with something, now's the time, because if not, we'd have to reprieve the third reading. Counselor Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I just have a question about one of our nonprofits here, the South Peace Community Resources Society. Can anybody tell me what they do?
I don't know the whole list of things they do. They're in the one building right beside the pharmacy. So, they do, get in my head here, sorry, some counseling, working with some of the single parents that need certain things. They're at Dawson Creek. I did meet with them. I apologize. I don't have the whole list. It was something that when we were dealing with the Ministry of Children and, is that what it is? Thank you, Family Services. That was one of the groups that were mentioned and it's quite a wide list of what they offer. You know, they can put you in place with somebody in Dawson or Chatwin. So, they do quite a bit. Other questions? Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Let me grab Counselor Norbury, please. Okay, moving on. B.C. Natural Resource Forum travel approval report dated October 6, 2025, from the Executive Assistant to Mayor, Council and CO regarding B.C. Natural Resource Forum travel approval. Before we start putting a bunch of different motions out there, anybody want to attend? I will attend. Anybody else want to attend? I do believe we need to be there, I'll be honest with you. Someone needs to be there from council. Yes, it's a lot of oil and gas. It is still discussed in regards to wood and other wind and all that. It's an opportunity. Counselor Hoffman.
If you give me at least a few days to confirm that I can do it, I will put my name down to attend as well. I think we should have some representation there.
Okay, Counselor Hoffman. We can put your name down and staff can just wait to book you. If that works, you can still advise staff. Anybody else? Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can get sort of the same leeway as Counselor Hoffman, just to review. I might be interested in attending. Thanks.
Okay, the following members of council be identified for attendance at the 23rd Annual B.C. Natural Resource Forum on January 20th to 22nd, 2026, in Prince George, B.C. Counselor Norbury, Counselor Hoffman, Mayor Calca. Secondary, Counselor Nuxana. Discussion? Again, if you can attend, just let Ms. Scott know and she can, we'll just hold off booking it. My understanding, when I read through the thing, there's, some of it's already full anyways. So, there's waiting lists for some of the other things. So, I don't think a few days is going to hurt. Okay, call the question. All in favor? Carried. Let's Talk, council update on topics, report dated October 6, 2025, from the Executive Assistant to Mayor, Council and the CO regarding Let's Talk, council updates on topics. I'm just going to make a comment. I know we went through this. Okay, I don't know if I lost some pages here. Thank you, Counselor Norbury. I know I was going to talk to Ms. Scott today and at first I thought, you know, Northern Health, do we want Let's Talk to be all about healthcare? To be honest, I think Northern Health should be invited. At first, I was a little bit, you know, yes, we need to keep, don't take me wrong, I'm all about healthcare. I'm all about ER. Don't take me wrong, I'm not trying to get away from that. But the same aspect, to me, we have a lot of topics to talk about. You know, to me, the amazing job staff has done in regards to downtown sidewalks, all the asphalt replacement, the golf course road is being worked on today or this week. Talk about the new fire hall, what that looks like, what the residents think, you know, the B.C. housing and all that. But I do believe we should still invite Northern Health and let them deny the request to come. I think it's our obligation to our residents to have that invite to Northern Health. I would suggest that we don't just send an invite to Northern Health. My comments would be that we send an invite out to Minister Osborne with the Ministry of Health to also invite her to Tumbler Ridge for Let's Talk. It is, I mean, right now, I can't remember if they're in or out that week, but whatever. I think it's up to them to deny that request as well. I think this is an opportunity to have more voices if she is able to attend, that she sees the frustration from our community and the worry-ness, the people that are scared, the people that are waiting for the next individual to lose their lives, that it's just so important that we have our after-hours ER. So, to me, we'd leave it on. At first, I was the other way around. Counselor Gillick and then Counselor Hoffman.
I think that it would be a topic that came up anyways when we opened up the floor. So, I think you're right to invite them. I think it's their job to, I think it's their popularity to win or lose at this point. Like, and so much goes on behind the scenes that, you know, it's kind of day-to-day where you and the, Mayor Calca and the CAO are often the folks that are doing the meetings and it's not something you can update daily. And so, I think that you're right to keep it on there. I even think maybe we could go so far as to invite their Board of Directors. I know we've talked about making a meeting with them, so I don't know where we sit with that. So, maybe that would depend on whether or not we get that meeting with them. I like the B.C. housing update. Lots of questions often about that kind of thing. And it might be a good time to put out the snow removal, like have, I don't know that we need to speak to it necessarily, but maybe have some pamphlets there so folks know what the snow removal is. I think every year, everybody's like, "How come I didn't get my snow removed?" Or, "How come I didn't do this?" You know, even if it's just some pamphlets there for people's information or whatever might be an idea. But I like what's here. I will not be available, unfortunately. So, I'll try and get some questions ahead of time from folks. But I think you've called it on the healthcare stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, that would be the senior snow removal that people can call into the DTR in looking into removing their berms and such that sometimes get left. Maybe we can have something there on how they register for that. I think that's a good call. Counselor Hoffman and then Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think there's any question that as long as Northern Health is our provider, that they need to be included. However frustrated I can get at this, I still say it's existential for our town. And if they're there, I think that's going to be the Let's Talk, to be blunt. If they refuse to come, then I think the evening will change significantly. So, I am, I actually like this. Our Let's Talks in the past seem to have gotten one-dimensional to a large degree and will again in the future, especially if healthcare is the issue. But I do like the individual ideas that you're listing and sort of a, here's where we're at this time if we don't have Northern Health here. But it's going to be on everybody's mind until it's resolved. So, as much as it will be frustrating, I think that's the only choice. Thank you.
Nope, thank you. Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Merrick Calca. It might be worthwhile for us to segment our Let's Talk. I mean, right here, I mean, we do have agenda items, health. But if Northern Health was willing to come, I mean, we could potentially offer security for them if that's something that they're interested in. But we should be, you know, potentially just having a segment if they're willing to come, whoever they're willing to send. And I can appreciate their hesitancy, but the best thing that they could do is provide information to the residents that are looking for something or else the residents themselves are going to create the information. It's better to hear from them than speculation. So, if they're willing to come, I would not be opposed to segmenting our Let's Talk to being five to six would be helpful. Thanks.
Nope, thank you for that. Oops. Counselor Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a differing opinion. I don't agree with inviting Northern Health for the reasons of I don't want to hear them explain what an emergency is again. And I really don't want to hear any more excuses. I disagree. I think it's going to take over. want to hear any more excuses, I disagree, I think it's going to take over a large portion of this Let's Talk, and we have some pretty important topics that we need to talk about. One other thing, though, the feedback that we got from the last Let's Talk, there were some pretty good suggestions, and we haven't been able to recap, or break them down, or talk about any of those suggestions, so, you know, when we have these Let's Talks, it is the opportunity for residents to bring forward some, some thoughts, or some good ideas, or whatever that might be, but if we're not discussing them afterwards, or it just gets filed away in minutes, it's not being as effective as it could be, I think, so I'm really curious on some of the topics from the last one I attended, there was some pretty good ideas, and one of them was around emergency management that we haven't talked about or followed up on, so I'm just curious on that.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I mean, I'll be honest, we used to get an update just before Let's Talk and stuff like that, I think it's up to us, we get an update back from staff, it comes with all the information that was asked at the Let's Talk, and I received it, that is, to me, up to us, is left to the officials to give direction in what we want to do. I think staff does a great job getting it to us, and then we don't give the direction, and that's no fault on, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'll take all the blame, I think that's, that's the problem, is we're, we get it, we hear, I'll be honest, I had to leave, I felt bad that I had to leave, but there was, there was something else that went on, but I think it's us, our job is left to the officials to get a pulse on it, and make different directions. Some of the times, and I'll be honest, with emergency management and that, a lot of it's waiting for government to, and that was one of our asks at the UBCM, is where are we at on their, on their RFP for when they came in and did the reevaluation, 3.5 kilometers, no, sorry, yeah, 3.5 kilometers outside the boundaries of our 1.5 that we were doing with Fire Smart, I know it's been, the RFP was done, it was, it was looked at, where are we at on those prescriptions, what were the, so that was one of our questions, and our ask from the Ministry of Forest, so again, we got to wait for that. Now, I do believe, Councilor Bertrand, maybe I need to do a better job of pinpointing that with staff, that we're constantly going back to Ministry of Forest staff, like, we've asked this, where's this information? So, I do think that we have to, we're the ones that have to lead that, I think staff did a great job with an overview, I received it, and I believe that we've let it fall off the table. Go ahead, Councilor Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and that wasn't in any way trying to point any blame to anybody, it was just a matter of thinking about, myself as a resident, if I was to come to multiple Let's Talks, you know, we're going to get an update from the last Let's Talk of some of the topics, but have we, have we followed up on it, or have we recapped it, or discussed it at all? So, this one about emergency management was more on, on regards to communication throughout the district in that sense, and what is our resiliency plan for lack of cell service if a cell tower goes out, so I'm not sure if staff has discussed any of that within the emergency management program or not, but I think it's really important that we not only hear from our residents, but we acknowledge their suggestions somehow as well.
Yep, I agree. Councilor Knoxanna, then Councilor Norbury.
Thank you, I like the idea of inviting Northern Health, it is up to them to speak on the healthcare situation in Tumbler Ridge right now. If they were to confirm their attendance, I think that there could be reasonable grounds then for us having two Let's Talks, one specific to healthcare and one for a lot of these other really important issues. I'm not sure they will accept the invitation, but I think that it's worth at least extending it.
Great. Councilor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kerkalka, I really appreciate Councilor Bertrand's comments about follow-up to Let's Talk topics. I appreciate your comments, Mayor, and that it's up to us to bring them forward, it is a challenge for us, outside of the notice of motion period, to bring forth agenda item topics, I mean, that is an option for us to talk about them, I think what might be a great idea would be that if we have actionable items or suggestions, that we throw it on a PPC, we talk about it, you know, I have no doubt that staff is taking that information in, and they're incorporating it into their plans about what they're doing, and I think that would be great to be able to get out there, like, oh, we received, you know, this suggestion about emergency management, and our emergency management team has talked about this, and it's being incorporated. I have no doubt that these things are being thought of by staff, but, you know, if there's things that we could talk about, if we want to change the direction of the ship, if we want to add to our strategic goals, then we have an opportunity, thanks.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to put on the floor that we direct staff to contact the Minister of Health, Josie Osborne, to invite her to the Let's Talk. Secondary, Councilor Knoxanna, discussion. Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, the other motion I have is a motion that a workshop is scheduled one month after each Let's Talk that council has. Secondary. Councilor Knoxanna, discussion. Reason I state that is, this is where it can come back, council can get updated and remember what was all discussed by our residents and what concerns were, and take that away from that workshop and get it into a PMP. There may be things that are already, that were already being done, and we can just announce what it was, maybe we didn't know the answer at the Let's Talk, but a workshop gives us an opportunity to go right through it, pull it through the weeds, instead of doing it at a PMP, do it as a workshop, and then bring it forward to a PMP on the items that we want. That's why I'm putting it down there. Call the question, all in favor. Carrie, I think this is an opportunity to try, if it doesn't work, don't do it again, remove it, but, you know, I appreciate Councilor Bertrand, because, you know what, it happens every year, you know, I've been on council 10 years or 11 years, and it's every year, so I think this is an opportunity, council gets back together. Okay, everybody else is good with all the other ones, the new fire hall with ideas, and we can talk about it. I do have the speed limit in regards to Highway 52 North, I did not look at 29, no 29's on there, but I think those are two different highways, I'm prepared to talk about Highway 52, it's a lot different highway than Highway 29, in my opinion. I think if we work with one highway first, get people's opinion, talk to ministry, then have ministry look at Highway 29 if it's doable, my understanding from ministry is, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but they've obviously traveled that highway, understand what the realm of the highway is, that was the highway I first initiated with, was in Highway 29, I think we could look at that after, if it was to go through. Councilor Bertrand. Sorry, but one thing is, is we, I missed this last year, so again, so that's me missing it, but we need to make sure there's a buy-in from residents, so we don't go to the ministry, they do all the work, and then we get a bunch of pushback from residents that they didn't want it, so that's why it's there. Councilor Bertrand.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to ask, the number nine topic, speed limits to Highway 2952, that was before I came on council, so I'm just curious, we're looking to up the speed limits?
On Highway 52, from 90 to 100. It's been asked by multiple, so it's not me, I mean, I'll be honest, I travel 10 clicks over anyways, but it's been multiple people that have reached out to me, multiple residents, because they know I meet with Modi on at least once a year, if not twice a year, but again, talking with the regionals, they're like, we need to get buy-in, need to make sure that we're not talking just to the same 10 or 15, that it's brought up and see what residents think. And then it's a decision still by Modi, doesn't mean it happens.
Right. Yeah, I'm just, I guess my biggest concern with Highway 52 North is the condition of it, and then adding speed to that condition is going to make things worse, so I would have some major concerns with this one.
Yeah, the Whippy Hoos would not be going. That's the worst part of the highway, that would still stay at 60. Okay, anything else that people want to add in regards to this? So, I know it, and I'll bring it up, staff advised me of it, there was talk about, oh, can we live zoom this? I do not recommend live zooming Let's Talk, I think we can tape it, and then put it back, put it up on our feed later, there is a ton of work for us to build a live feed outside this chamber, I think we're adding a huge amount of work to our district staff, or to Ms. Scott's staff, not really to my staff, to Ms. Scott, that, we had a chat about it today, and it would be a ton of work to livestream, just because of what we have to have for secueness in regards to that thing, we'd have to probably move over to the community center, and I believe that would be a lot of work, so talking with Ms. Scott, there's probably an opportunity, I believe, my understanding from Ms. Scott, they're going to try and look at it for this Let's Talk, a way of videotaping it and then uploading it, so, I know that was something that came out of that one, so, obviously, we got one, Councilor Bertrand, so that's what, that's what staff's going to do. Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on. Scheduling meetings. Just council's aware, there's a workshop tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Community Center. The Blundens' haunted house is on the 25th at the Fall Fairgrounds, Pumpkin Patch is the Sunday, bonfires at the 31st. I think that's all I got, I don't have any new, Councilor Knoxanna.
Thank you, the only thing I have flagged off here is the mayor's food drive, and I can't actually remember if it's November or December, but typically-
November.
We've had it the certain day of the certain month.
Yep, I planned on asking the same question, thank you for that, but it's usually in November, I want to say it's, one, two, third Wednesday of the month, which would be the 19th, but I think, I'll leave it to staff, Ms. Scott, maybe we could just contact the food bank, I know it was set by the fire department to make it on their, their practice night, but we can get that updated for the next meeting in October. Anything else for scheduling meetings for council? Anything from staff?
No, thank you, I was going to remind council about the workshop tomorrow, but you already did that, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. 8.4, apologize, going to have to find it here. Letter of support of the petition to restore 24-hour emergency department, there's a recommendation there, Councilor Knoxanna.
The council provides a letter of support, a letter in support of the petition to restore and maintain 24-hour emergency care in Tumbler Ridge, and that this letter be included with the submission of the petition to the Legislative, Legislative Assembly by Peace River South, MLA Larry Newfield.
Secondary, Councilor Gillick, discussion. I want to thank Ms. Scott, something I talked to her, I'll be honest, last minute, sometimes agendas go that way, but she was able to get her report together, one of the things I did ask Ms. Scott is to make sure that it is something that we can support in regards to the district, so just to make sure that we're not colluding it, or something that we shouldn't be as a, as a corporation, after she went through and read through it, this is definitely something that us as a municipality, as elected officials, can support on behalf of the district, so I will 100% support this motion, I do believe it's important that we support it in the way that it comes from the elected officials, to show that it's a community support, I think it's really, really important. Any other discussion, Councilor Knoxanna.
Thank you, I'm obviously in support of this motion, I'd just like to point out that there's over 1,800 signatures on the petition heading for Victoria, and this represents such a huge amount of Tumbler Ridge residents, when we think Stat Canada has us at 23-ish hundred residents, it's, it's pretty big for a community this size to have that many people come out, sign their name, and just really advocate for their healthcare in our region.
Thank you. Call the question, all in favor. Oh, sorry, Councilor Hoffman, Carrie, my apologies. 8.5, letter to RTVS and RCCBC, take the recommendation, please, Councilor Knoxanna.
The council authorizes the mayor to sign and send the attached letter to the Vera RTVS and RCCBC leadership.
Secondary, Councilor Norbury, discussion. Just comment, I put this in front of council, I could have signed it, but I think it's very, very important as we go through this concern, issue, in regards to Northern Health and in regards to the lack of ER after-hours and on weekends, that council is up to date as possible. Yes, you're not receiving all the, all the minutes from all the meetings I'm having, but you will be, but I think it's really, really important for council to be able to have an opportunity to read through this, and then make a decision if they want to support it or not. Okay, I'm going to call the question, all in favor. Carrie. Notice of motion, any notice of motions? I'm going to have, I'm going to put a notice of motion on the floor, the council re-looks at the timeline and date that we have set for grant and aid and fee for service for 2026. Any other notice of motions? Okay, council business, thanks, Councilor DeSoul, for your reports, I know there'll be more in the next agendas, anything from the floor? Councilor Gillick.
I have some reports coming in to our next, I didn't get it here soon enough for this agenda, I did want to say that I enjoyed going to the celebrations for the Hope Truck with Mayor Kerkalka, Ms. Scott, and Councilor DeSoul, and Councilor Knoxanna, it was a pretty great night to see all the celebrations, I really enjoyed UBCM, I really appreciated meeting the Minister of Mines, Minister Brar, Brar, did I say that?
Brar, yeah, I think so.
And his chief of staff, I, probably a bit of a highlight, he had some pretty great stories to tell, and I am going to do a written report for that as well, but yeah, it was, it was good, and the museum didn't have quorum the other night, what was interesting, though, is we were given information by Minister Kangs and her staff that there was 70 repositories already in B.C., those were archaeological, not paleontological, which is only four, so I'm hoping maybe we can follow that up with a letter, and let your staff know what they're talking about, and the library is getting some new stuff, so watch out for that in the coming days.
So, just in regards to Minister Kang, you may see a different information in her response letter after the UBCM, because again, sometimes they speak at Hawk, and then their staff corrects them after, after we leave, so we may see that in her response letter, so we'll wait till we get the response letter from the ministries, from the UBCM, because that's where, that's where they have staff has an opportunity to clarify in there for, not just for the minister, but for also for, for us as elected officials, we all know that we had tons of meetings, just imagine how many meetings each minister had, so I think maybe, and maybe not, maybe, maybe, maybe we'll have to clarify from our side to their side, which is not an issue. Councilor Norbury, and then Councilor Knoxanna.
Thank you, Mayor Kerkalka, I'll give a little bit of update on the UBCM conference sessions that I attended, but first off, I want to say that we almost had the Minister of Mines, I bet if you had a few more minutes to work on them, to get us that permit for Kanuma, but it would have gotten there, almost there, he was, he seemed like he was about to crack, and that's pretty good for a small-town mayor to, to get that much from a minister, so, well done. I went to a housing, housing session about activating new housing supply, it's interesting seeing the transition year over year, because I attend like housing sessions every year because it's always an important topic, you know, previous years, they're talking about just getting buildings out there, and what they're finding is that they're, yeah, they're building these apartment complexes, but they're not really suited for families who are actually looking for housing supply, they're, what is most, what makes the most money for the developers, single-bedroom apartments, and they can just build a bunch of them, but what we're, the talk now is gentle-density buildings, so that's kind of like rural complexes, adding accessory dwellings, which we're already doing, which is great, and small-scale multi-housing units versus the larger sections, because they're identifying that the public wants family-friendly homes, that's, that's the ultimate goal for a lot of, a lot of people that are buying houses, some of the topics on how local government can get involved and improve this, some municipalities are utilizing automated, where is it here, automated building application approvals, they're using AI to work with zoning compliances, to speed along that process, and then, you know, to give insurance, to give security to developers to make it easy for them, that comes, every year they talk about that, it needs to be easy for developers to come in, and municipalities really need to show that. The other sessions that I went to was strengthening wildfire, we're doing a lot that they're talking about, you know, unfortunately, I had to leave partway through, but they were talking about Fire Smart programs, and how people need to get involved, and we're already doing it, so we're doing a great job. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Knoxanna.
Thank you, I was able to head to Site C before we left for UBCM to take in a tour of the dam that's been being built there, it was really interesting to see what's been done, and the amazing work- It was really interesting to see what's been done, and the amazing work, work there. The tour guides are two very, very passionate people about the work being done at Site C. So, it was pretty interesting. I took in the Hope Truck 2025 wrap-up celebration, and I'm really excited for how these projects are going to roll out in the four communities that they're intended for. So, we'll be looking forward to hopefully seeing a little bit of, of each, and then taking part, of course, in the tumblers, and being a part of it. UBCM, of course, happened. My highlight was listening to Ms. Olson present about Chora through the Outdoor Rec Council of BC. The panel really spoke about the need for trails and the benefit for communities, and how the benefit is for residents first, and how that is an attractant, both for the people who live in the community to get out, be active, and why they should stay there. And it is typically something that, that residents use first, or attracts new residents to come to the community. And then the tourism draw, and the, the amount of people that come in just to, to see our outdoor spaces, which we're all sitting here, we all, all know that our trails are pretty awesome. I was able to take in a short presentation from the Mayor of Stewart, BC, along with a lady from BC Ambulance, and they talked about the struggle of recruiting and retaining ambulance workers in Stewart and small communities, and also the struggle of transporting on some of BC's remote highways, and the lack of communication there, which I found really interesting, because I see Tumbler Ridge sort of mirroring the remoteness and the highway access to a bigger center. While we were there, all of us who were in attendance met with the Executive Director of the Battered Women's Society, and discussed ways that we, as a small northern community, could take next steps in maybe addressing some of the the issues happening in our community and in our region. So, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that. A highlight since coming home was attending the rally here this past week with over 100 of our residents advocating for the reinstatement of ER services here in our community. The weather was frightful, and it was really cold, but seeing people come out on a Saturday, and some really great speakers talk about what emergency services in our community means to them, and why it's so important for us to have them here. I'm sure if people check out CBC News or Global, they've both reported on this, this rally. So, it's great to see that our plight is sort of out there in the broader news for, hopefully, the province to take note of.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Okay, I had a busy couple weeks. Council hit on a few things. The Hope Truck celebration held at Soto's Culture Center, well done. Well done. I want to thank staff for making sure they organized and, and got us a table. But to IMW and Kanuma, or Kanuma Resources to come up with an idea, and it was Marilyn from IMW that came up with an idea or a thought, and ran with it. She was allowed to run with it. I think what they've done for the four communities, which is Chatwin, Tumbler Ridge, Soto, and West Morley, to see the funds raised, which we don't have a total yet, because they're still working on the, from the silent auction, that everybody's going to get a quarter of what's raised to be able to spend on the projects. And our project was a video for youth and the indigenous language on signs. I, I can't wait to see as that comes forward for our community, but to see the other communities as they, as they work through some of their stuff. But just, just to the organizing, organization of Marilyn, like, wow, what a great job. So, just want to thank staff for, for participating with us at Soto. I think it's important to do that. It was just great. Want to thank a couple residents for organizing a petition for Tumbler Ridge. Also want to thank them for their rallies. And that would be Chris Norbury and Nicole Nuxana, as residents of the community that have organized those. The other thing I've seen that they're trying to organize is, is small, is small videos, or if people want to reach out to them, that they can do a video of maybe some of the experiences they've had previously when ER was open, and maybe now that we don't have an ER open. So, you know, in my opinion, feel free to reach out to those two residents. I think it's really important to see when residents come forward and, and take the lead. And I understand they're elected officials, but you're also residents that did it. So, that's why I commend you on the residents that did it, not as elected officials. I think it's important to see that. So, I want to thank those two residents for doing that. I had a phone call today with Sycamore this morning at 9:00 AM in Callwood. And that was just to have a conversation. It came up with Ministry of Health, Ministry of Health, when I met with her and, and Ms. Scott joined. She'd mentioned Sycamore right away, if they'd done something, she didn't even know they were doing it. Again, they're running a clinic. They were able to build a, a new clinic slash community center with grant money. They got just over $6 million to build this, that indigenous support. So, again, they're running a clinic. They, right now, they have two doctors and a nurse practitioner. About 3,000 residents in the community. In the summertime, it goes up to about 25,000. In the wintertime, they see about 10,000 sliders come into the community. My favorite question was, how, how long does it take to get in to see your physician? If you don't get in today, you'll be in tomorrow or the next day. And that's with two doctors and one nurse practitioner. Not six or eight weeks. They are not on the APP program. They are not. They're on a contract, and it, and it's billed directly to, to interior health there. So, that was an eye-opener. But again, it's a clinic. So, I asked them about ER and stuff, and they don't. They don't. They're 20 minutes from seminar. On the weekends between themselves and seminar, someone always is open on Saturday for a clinic. So, whether the clinic is open in Sycamore, or that clinic, the next, that Saturday is open in seminar, but there's always a, a medical clinic opened within those two communities. So, that was great news. They're doing it by contract. They're not working for the municipality. I still think there's some good things that they've done that we can, we can take from there. Callwood's in a different, a different little bit. Again, they're running a clinic. But the difference there is they are district employees, so they get a pension, district benefits. Right now, they have one full-time doctor that was been hired. Their second doctor will start in November. He's a, a BC resident that went to the US for schooling, and his practice has now decided to leave the US, will start in November. They have attracted a third doctor, and I'm trying to think from where now? Ireland. There's some issues there with getting him, whether that's his permmy, or visas, or I'm not sure. They didn't really get into it. But they look like they'll start in the first quarter of 2026. Again, they're not running ER, they're only running a clinic. But everything is done internally from, by staff. So, they have the, right now, the one doctor. Right now, they're hoping to have only one, is it one, yeah, one medical assistant to run two and a half doctors? They're figuring they're going to need one per doctor. They figure now they can do one per two and a half doctors, so as they start to fill. He was very clear. They definitely took some time with us today. Totally appreciate. I mean, a very bright mayor, very gung-ho. He ran on, on, on this in his campaign, was to do something for medical within their community. He's not going to spend any time with not just us, but any municipality unless there's a motion from council. That this is something that we're looking at, we're trying to do something, but needs a resolution, because they don't want to waste, and they've already, like you said, they've already had a couple communities waste their time. You know, they, they spent a lot of time on it. All of a sudden, six, seven months go down the road, oh, yeah, a couple of my councillors don't agree. So, I, I, you know, I, I pat him on the back for that. Good on him. I mean, they're willing to help us, willing to share all the information with Ms. Scott, everything that they can that's not in, in camera, but willing to help us out. They, they could save us money, because they've already paid for all the legal opinions, and to legal this and to legal that. I asked them about their doctors as their district employees, can they go work in ER? And that is something they've thought about. Can we, can we, can we allow them to go work for Island Health in ER if that doctor wanted to? They haven't come to, to that yet. But I think this is something that we need to have a discussion in regards, are we allowed to run an ER and not a clinic? Or how does that look? So, I think that is something I'm taking away and working with ministry staff on. I think that's the first thing we have, we have to look into. One thing they really looked into was the Health Act. Were they, were they stepping on toes? Were they doing something illegal? They had all the support of Adrian Dix when he was the Health Minister. So, yeah, I know, I was shocked too. Well, I was shocked. But yeah, so, you know, he did have some tough discussions with Island Health that, no, don't, you can't be doing this, and you can't be doing that. And he said, "You can't fire me. I'm elected." Just went with it. So, I think we have a few pieces of puzzle to figure out. I don't think we can just constantly wait for Northern Health. I think we need to look at a few things. If, if council is, to me, that seems like the direction, is going to have some more information, which I'll be working with Minister Health and, and hopefully her staff. I've had some good dialogue with Josie since my return from UBCM. Yeah, so I, we, we just need to find out what's there, what they're going to allow us to do. So, but I thought they were great calls. I appreciate Ms. Scott setting that up, spending the time with me in those two meetings. It was great. UBCM, busy. I'm glad people made it to sessions. I didn't make one session while I was at the UBCM, not one. I did, oh, I shouldn't say that. I went to resolutions a couple times, and I did make, I shouldn't say it, and I made one. I made Brittany Anderson, Minister of State's opening remarks at a, at a thing. That was it. I did over 34 meetings between the district, the PRD, and at Hawk meetings. I had five meetings with the Minister of Health. I had three meetings with CEO of Northern Health, Chiro. So, yeah, it was busy. But I, I, you know, I'm hoping we see some stuff come out of the health. I think that was a big, the big mandate is health. I've had some great dialogue with Josie. Am I getting anywhere? I don't know. Being honest, don't know. But we need to get, eventually, it, it's a, it's probably the wrong time, but eventually, we need to have a frank conversation, her and I, and see where we sit. And I think that's the information we need to know. What does it look like for us taking over in ER? Can we do it? Is that against the Health Act? I don't know. I'm not going to read it up. I think they can tell me. That's why they have the staff. I thank council for everything they did down there. I was very sick on Monday. I picked up a really, really bad cold from, from somebody else, from the Peace Region, I believe. I still have it. But they took care of all the staff meetings on, on the Monday, and I only jumped in when I got frustrated, which a couple of them got it. But I do appreciate council taking turns and, and doing that. So, thank you very much for that. I was able to, working with senior or Chief of Staffs with the government, we were able to get a last-minute meeting with Premier Ebi. So, we were able to meet with him on Thursday. You know, to be honest, health was our priority. It was probably the first thing we, we talked about. We did end up mentioning a couple things, obviously, the highway, but health. You know, Chiro did say something to me at the legislative grounds on, on Thursday morning after I met with him. And more or less, you know, we're trying to talk about models, and I did, I did send an email asking him for a frank answer, so I had it. But I, I do believe he, you know, maybe, maybe I'm wording my emails. He's probably looking for, he probably knows what I'm looking for. I'm looking for just the trigger word. I don't want all of his, his other stuff. But he pretty much told me there, like, the models we look at don't look like we have ER. So, I was pretty frustrated and upset when we went and met with Premier Ebi. You know, knowing that, you know, the guy mentions it to me. I mean, I appreciate, I'll be honest, I, I appreciate Premier Ebi. I mean, as for, you know, at first, I broke down, because I was pretty frustrated. And thanks to Counselor Julik stepped in. But his comments were right away, "Did you reach out to Josie?" So, I do have those good connections. So, I didn't. I mean, like I said, I spent a lot of time with Josie. So, I will be, we're, we're going to connect again. I think it's important to connect again. But with those are the answers we need to find out. I hope council, if, if people think I'm, I'm leading down the wrong path of the direction I believe I've received in regards to ER and all the different options slash models slash visions, I believe I've got it right. If I don't, please talk to me after the meeting. But I believe that's the direction I received at the last one. I just want to make sure I'm on the, on the right page with council. I have had multiple meetings with Northern Health. Dr. Helms, our advisor, Larry Newfeld, those minutes will be coming from staff. I have staff at all time now in the meeting to take notes. I can't do it all, so that's what I'm doing there. We met with Vera at Northern Health and Dr. Helms and Larry last week. It seemed a little weird to me, going to be straightforward about it. Seems like Vera can do it without even having a doctor available on call, but Northern Health doesn't have a policy for that. But they have a policy on the island for it. So, it sounds like we have to reinvent the wheel, and I'm not sure if, if Northern Health is willing to make that a policy. It seemed weird to me, but that was what said, that's why you see the letter that was in, in front of us tonight, was there, there's other options out there. Yes, we need to have doctors, don't take me wrong, but it sounds like they do it in other communities without a doctor on, on call. Is it, is it, is it the best fix for our community and our family members? No. Is it something that we can get going so we have it? Yes. I think we're, we're really, really playing with the iceberg here when it comes to medical care in Tumbler Ridge. I'm well aware of some incidents that have been happening in the evenings. You know, a young, a young child stopped breathing, or I shouldn't say that, was having breathing issues. Mom was fairly frantic, did get transferred out of the community. So, there's some concerns there. And I don't think we can be playing with our family members' lives. So, I'm looking at all options. So, that's why that letter's signed. Thank Counselor Norbury. Counselor Nuxana, I mentioned it. We, we had an opportunity, probably take a lot of time here, actually, not that bad. We had an opportunity, and I appreciate Ms. Scott. Sometimes you got to communicate with staff before you do it. We had an opportunity, about, spent about an hour and a half, hour and 40-ish minutes, maybe, it's Counselor Julik, my apologies, to spend time with the Minister of Mines and his Chief of Staff. It was an opportunity where, first, I was trying to organize a supper, because I, you know, but their schedule had changed, so we had to move things around and, and just become appies. But it was a great opportunity. I do believe I was close for a full restart of Quintet. I was right close. I had fairly good dialogue with his Chief of Staff, and I said to him, "Oh, just so you know this," he's like, "Oh, don't do that. He'll probably do it." Well, I'm like, "I'm just so you know, I'm going to be doing it." That's, that's a whole process. So, we were close. We had great meetings with the Minister of Mine. We were able to, Kanuma had already received it anyways. I'd already advised Minister Mines and his Chief of Staff about, "Thank you very much for the bridge permit." And they were obstructed, because I think that's what they were going to announce at our happy night, but I already announced it to them. So, they're not sure who leaked it what to me. But yeah, so I knew about it at a time, made sure council was aware about the bridge permit. But we were able to get a picture on the legislative grounds, holding the paper copy of the bridge permit. So, there is an opportunity to dialogue more with Minister Mines. There is some issues, I shouldn't say issues, maybe some concerns on a few environmental things. I have a meeting with Kanuma this week. Just curious if those are minor, major, medium? I did make that comment with Premier Ebi, or no, sorry, Minister of Mines with the PRD, that if they're only minor or, or that, why can't we get the permit with a stipulation that these have to be done in this so many months? So, I, I think it's important for our industry, if we can advocate for them, it, one, I think it helps them, one, financing, but also to move forward on whatever they need to move forward on when it comes to, especially Quintet, whether that's different equipment, more equipment, more staffing. To me, that's, that's a job, so. I did attend the rally on Saturday. Well done. It was great to see the residents out. Yes, it was chilly. But I think, I think we were warm because of where all of our hearts were. Hearing from some of the speakers, well done. Mr. Bell probably was one of the, one of the good ones. I mean, they're all good, don't take me wrong. He made a comment, a story about his mom when she had a broken leg, and was at the clinic, and the nurse come in and said to the doctor, "And you need to come over?" And, you know, more or less, her comments were like, "What, like, what? I'm not important?" Well, there was, there was more of a, more important call next door. So, she understood that. Now, he's saying like, you know, you know, what happens if he breaks his leg? It's 2:00 in the morning, and he's on, on the last ambulance, because the first one's already out of town, and he's traveling out of the community. Now, like he says, you start thinking, "Oh, it's only a leg. Maybe that, I should wait, and just in case that ambulance needed by somebody else?" You know, I think, well done by him. I was well impressed with his story and his concern as a resident, and, and thinking that. Because to me, how many residents are thinking like that? "Ah, I'm going to call an ambulance. I think I'll drive, and hope when I get there that it's not on diversion?" How many people are doing that today? Lots. I know lots that are driving out of our community, and getting there, and it's on diversion or whatever, which is very concerning. Or people are still getting trapped, and because it's on the weekend or late at night, the social service group is not working in the hospital, so they're not getting cab vouchers like Northern Health said. So, that's a concern. So, I've dialogued that, and I was sending an email about it. I just heard about it again today. So, yeah, I, I was really impressed. Ed, Ed Griffin also did a really good job speaking and, and stuff like that. Just, just talking about really what, what they're all getting and why we're not getting our healthcare. I'm trying to think of the other ones that spoke. Just, Ryan, yeah, Ryan was impressive. Just talked about, I mean, he has definitely a different vision when it comes to our back country, and what risk we put back there, and, and the added pressure we put on search and rescue, which again, I don't believe was thought about by, by Minister of Health or by Northern- which again, I don't believe was thought about by, by Minister of Health or by Northern Health. And not, not just them, but our fire department. We've seen them in tonight, Mr. Tubidall receiving 20 year medal. But our CMP, same thing with mental health. So there's some huge concerns. So again, it's going to be a busy year dealing with healthcare. Just trying to think of anything, if I'm forgetting anything, we'll just, oh, I had a mayor's meeting down there as well with the mayor of Lilawett. So she started this thing last year, getting the mayors together to talk about health. And that was because Lilawett was really seeing the service interruptions at their hospital. So I was a speaker there, there was three speakers. Obviously I talked about ours, Minister of Health did join us. So it was just the mayors, I think there was 14 or 15 of us and the Minister of Health. So again, that was about two and a half hours, great dialogue, hearing the stories from other facilities and, you know, issues they've had and how they're trying to come out of it. What they're seeing now in some of the facilities that have upped their staffing is other communities are traveling to that community for doctors because they can get in within 20 minutes or 30 minutes. Tumblr Ridge seen that back when Dr. Helm was still practicing, we had the weekend clinic. We had people from Chatwin and Dawson and Fort St. John travel here. So they're seeing it in the south as well. They're going to try and, and, and deal with that because obviously now it's going to put a stress on that, that community. One thing I learned from Clearwater, I believe it was Clearwater, I mean, we'll get minutes, so if I have it wrong, I'll bring it back. They too had some concerns in their ER. And I won't say losing staff, but people calling in sick, so they were going on service interruptions. It was a bit of a pushback by the, by the healthcare workers there. And it actually all came down to the scheduling routine that was done by Interior Health. They were, I'm not sure how he did that, I didn't get a chance to speak to him. Everybody was fairly busy, but they brought their own mediator in, was able to get a room in the hospital, or pretty much closed door, come in and see me if you want. First day they, they had five individuals come in, the next day they had 25 individuals come in, all employees of, of Interior Health and talk about the concern. They shut down their ER overnight one night, made sure, I don't know how many, how much notice they gave and did a rescheduling of that because Interior Health couldn't figure it out. So now it's working, they're in great, great, great scenario. The biggest thing I heard from that meeting, and I heard it from every mayor in there, do not take your foot off the gas. So I just want to make sure council is aware of that. We need to keep, keep the pressure on, keep our foot on. Our residents need to do it. I know it was talked, pretty much the whole time at the rally, that the residents are now, need to also lead this and help, but I'll be honest, as elected officials, we can't take our foot off the gas. That was said loud and clear from every, every mayor that was there. I made some comments in this meeting about like who, my, my concern is who's next? Fraser Lake? Don't worry, Fraser Lake, it's already happened to. So we can scratch them, it's already happened to them, they don't have it. So when I talked with her, she's like, don't let your foot off the gas. She said, once they remove it, you won't get it back. So she said, keep fighting for it. So I, I'm just telling council that right now, make sure we're, as a group, we're doing all we can. I know I will, but as a group, that we're, we're trying our best anytime we get it. I think we are well known in Victoria. One, for the shirts that were made by Forever Young Society and, and some of us purchased them, but there were some stickers taken down on behalf of the organizing committee. Some councils brought them down, elected officials brought them down. There wasn't too many people walking around the UBCM that did not have a sticker. We were well known at the legislative grounds soon as we walked in. Because everybody was wearing our stickers, so hats off. Same thing there, people, people couldn't believe the stories we were telling them. So again, I think we need to keep our foot on the gas. We did try to do a joint statement with Northern Health. We wrote one, I thought it was well written by staff. Chiro did not think that was well written, made a bunch of changes. Staff will send all this out. I'll be honest, staff has been busy. So I'll, it, it's, can I send it out? Probably, I've got so much of my email, I don't know if I can find it anymore. It'll all come out to you, but he made a bunch of changes. Obviously we didn't agree the changes, so we didn't, I didn't sign it. We've sent a new one out, I'm not sure if we've heard back, but he didn't like the concept. Again, I'm still trying to work to get the ER open, is more or less what he changed, so. Again, I think we just got to keep pushing on it. One thing is, is I believe, if Ms. Scott, you can tell us the letter to the board of directors for Northern Health, has that been sent?
The request for a meeting? Yes, requested a meeting.
Thank you. Can we send that letter once a week until you get a response? I don't want to be a delegation, I want to be a meeting.
We have been working with them to schedule a meeting. So we have had contact with them, we are working on scheduling a meeting, an in person meeting.
Perfect, thank you for that. I was last, I didn't hear that until, it must have been, some new news came in today. So thank you for that, thanks for sharing that. Again, I think it's important to meet with the board. Again, I hope council is available when we do it. I understand some people have different jobs, do what you can do. If not, we'll take your heart with us on our sleeves and, and do it. One thing that was forgot to be mentioned under 8.4, I think. Yes, 8.4. I'd like to put a motion on the floor. Am I allowed to go back? Ms. Scott, I thought we moved on? Okay, I'll just do it under council's business, it's all right. I'm not sure if this is where it belongs, you can tell me if it does or doesn't. I would hope council will support it, if not, it's up to you guys. I want to put a motion on the floor that we approve travel for councillor Noxana and councillor Norbury to attend Victoria from the 21st to the 24th. If I can get a second there. Councillor Noxana, discussion? Councillor Julik?
For what?
One I've already set up, so I didn't put my name on it because I'm already attending because I have a meeting set up. But because we've supported this petition, I'd like to see some support from, from council there when the petition is presented by Emily Larry Neufeld. Good. Ms. Scott?
Council actually passed a similar motion previously to make sure that any necessary travel to discuss any of these issues is already approved.
Would it fall for that?
Yes.
Good, good enough. Do they have a second there? Oh, you did, so I just called a question, but I just oppose it. All in favor? Opposed? Everyone's opposed defeated. Any emailed in questions, Ms. Scott? Okay, take a resolution to close, please. Councillor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor.
That the October 6, 2025, regular meeting council be closed to the public according to section 91 CNJ from the Community Charter to permit discussions about labor relations or other employee relations and information that is prohibited or information if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section 21 of the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act. Second there, councillor Noxana. All in favor? Carry five minute recess.